At seven o'clock, I'm going to call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen order. Our first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Selectmen Moscow, would you do the honors?
A diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
All right, all members of the Board of Selectmen are here in presence. We'll turn now to the approval of our meeting minutes from September nineteenth. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we accept the minutes of September nineteen twenty twenty four Board of Selectmen regular meeting as amended.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Any corrections?
Yes.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Page seven, there's just spelling of public participation, number eleven. Sherry for Wayne Sherry is spelled incorrectly. S H A R Y is the correct spelling and Adam Mehan Libs at Six Cobblestone Drive, not Allison Drive.
Anything else?
Yeah, that's all but enough.
Back up to page six. During the meeting, the first comment by Len Norton on one of his proposals was that he was going to go back, we asked him to go back and get two more quotes. And then the other one, he just flipped over and said, I guess there's no need to entertain that. And they've got it that he elaborated on a John Turner consul proposal. So I don't know if he'd want to fix that or not.
Yeah, he certainly didn't elaborate on the proposal, so I think that's right.
That's item J.
Any other corrections? All in favor of the minutes amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Public participation, this is one of two opportunities for members of the public to address the Board of Selectmen. I'll first ask if there's anybody here present who would like to do so and then invite anybody who may be online to do the same. Is there anybody here in the room who would like to address the board? Yes, ma'am, name and address, please.
Hi, Kate Carey Trelle, twenty eight A, Oakstone Road, Broadbrook. I'm the Chair of Education. And I wanted to speak to something that I believe is on your agenda this evening. First of all, as an introduction, the first selectman had said that the superintendent's attendance tonight, while welcome was not required as part of the procedural, as tonight is more procedural in nature. So we just wanted to say, Dr. Trudon wasn't able to be here tonight. He's been at night meetings every night this week.
Yeah, we spoke earlier today.
And I believe, yeah, we had been in communication with him. The specialist from CSG was first introduced to the Board of Ed Facilities Subcommittee by the first selectman. CSG has worked with him in the past and has recommended him as well. We understand that the Board of Selectmen is readdressing the motion concerning this. We would suggest that the motion read as follows. To allow the first selectman to sign the change request with CSG, allowing for the specialist to get direction from superintendent on next steps and develop a timeline with a goal of informing and including the public through surveys, fact sheets, frequently asked questions and focus groups sooner rather than later. In another note, the South Windsor superintendent had used a similar approach that we've discussed as our research on different ways to look at how to share these projects with the public, not with this specific specialist, but the other superintendent shared with our superintendent that having someone do this type of work with the community is an extremely valuable and needed part of the process. The Board of Ed had listened to the services provided by the specialist with an emphasis on gathering feedback from the parents and community members through surveys and focus groups. The goal is to inform all stakeholders and generate higher level turnout. The community can make an informed decision when we eventually reach the point of a referendum. This is a necessary step to move the work forward with our facilities work, engage the public, and it is a response to the residents who are seeking more information and input in this process. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment? I can't see who that is. Hey, Courtney, name and address, please.
September ninth sixteen. I'd like to begin, Sarah. Decision. For some background, I've been a poll worker for East Windsor nearly ten years. This year to date, I have received four paychecks from the town of Hallworth. Two of these four checks were for early voting. The other two were for the Republican primary, or a group. On August third, I received a confirmation email from one of our county councilors. It reads, I warn you, I'm sending this email to the party to refer you towards the following probably voting dates as the official time. Wednesday, August seventh, from nine thirty to six thirty, and Thursday, August eighth, from seven thirty to eight thirty. The pay for Wednesday, the shorter day, is one eighty-two eighty-one, and pay for Thursday, thirty hours, is two sixty-four cents. On August seventh, I arrived at the town hall annex and began my shift. About two hours into the shift, I was standing at nine-nine, W four, Connecticut W four, and an employee direct deposit in the morning. I was told to fill them out so I could be paid. I inquired about when and why this change was being implemented. Both registrars were not sure at that moment. They explained I could reach out to our town treasurer, Amy O'Toole, but that she was on vacation. It would not be available until Tuesday, August thirteenth. I finished my workday and worked the shift on the eighth as well. All parties present knew that I had not agreed to pay employees at the town. At no point was I advised that I needed to become an employee of the town in order to be paid until two hours into my August seventh homeworking day. At that point, I should have been told to leave as soon as I didn't want to be designated by the town as an employee. My challenge is that instead, I worked twenty-one hours and will not be receiving a paycheck. I have now been told I will not be paid for the time worked unless I ever even become a town employee. I sincerely hope in the future, when a decision to make a change such as this, that more time and thought is put into it. All parties involved should be aware of the change, understand why the decision to make the change happen, be able to properly communicate and implement the change as designated poll workers as town employees. If you need to seek legal advice to ensure you have moved forward correctly, then the research probably should have been done prior to implementing the new procedure. If this had been communicated to me in a clear way, I could have made an informed choice. I will conclude by saying that I commend both our registrar voters, all our poll workers, and while this being a part of this democratic process, we're at East Windsor. We need your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Is there anybody online who would like to address the board? Okay, move on. Um, we are up to nine A, discussing improved professional services agreement with Tax Serve Capital Services. The tax collector is with us. Ms. Croweville, do you want to explain what Tax Serve Capital Services is, what they do, and why we're working with them? Why would you would like us to continue to do so?
Tax Serve is a collection agency that I've been using for years for motor vehicle collections, those that have been delinquent over a year. And so I've been using them for quite a few years. I think it's probably the third contract we have renewed with them. We have extensions, but they can do skip places. They can do a lot more than I can to find a lot that are out of my realm of reach. Because I can find them on Facebook or DMV, but a lot of them move out of state and I can't find them. I do have this evening, because I had asked January for them to give me an analysis on how they have been doing collection wise. Excuse me. So I did ask Jason to check if I write if I pass this out. He didn't see any problem with it.
That's good information.
Yeah, just to see what happened. Doing your job. So they're extremely flexible. If I have an account that shouldn't be collected, all I have to do is email them or text them, not text them, but email or you can call them up and just say, hey, we need to stop collection on that. And they're fine. Okay, no problem. So they do not give me any type of trouble. They're extremely professional. They show up at all the tax collecting seminars. They're up to speed with all the laws that are changing and everything. So I highly recommend them for another round.
Just as a point of interest, I guess, what year did you start with Town of East Windsor?
I started in fourteen.
I could have guessed that based on the chart.
Good point.
Things kind of like bumping right along and then in twenty fifteen in terms of the
Linky is my favorite. Sorry.
So it's a it's a new contract of an existing relationship. It's in the packet. I think everybody probably has had a chance to work through it. They attach a fifteen percent add-on to the cost of the delinquent taxes that is paid by the delinquent taxpayer to the company, right?
So that is steep statute, fifteen percent. So they move that charge on to the taxpayer. We don't pay anything for them to do this service.
But they clear a check to us and we end up recouping our
You get money from them as an ACH, so it's dropped into our account once a week. And so they take all the responsibility of collecting it, they clear it, and then they give us the money.
So it's the delinquency owed, the interest on the delinquency owed, and then the fifteen percent on top of that.
Right, but they keep the fifteen percent. We get the tax and the interest.
That's what I was trying to
Right, right. They keep the fifteen percent because they're doing the work.
Is this balanced? Previous to the fifteen percent taken out or is it the fifteen percent? Is this the total after that?
So it shows their percentage there. So the total collected is with the fifteen percent, the total, but net collected is what comes out with the interest.
Okay.
Question. So so the collection rates like really dropped off in twenty twenty-one. And so do we, these are all motor vehicles. We might forever lose that because it's long and it's long gone because the car's gone and we can't lean anything, right? Because the car is probably not around anymore.
No, so twenty and twenty-one were COVID years.
Right.
So and we had three ninety-day extensions on motor vehicle registrations. So it just delayed it. And so they don't go away. What happens is it just increases the interest because people were hanging on to their motor vehicles because the value of new cars and the value of cars had skyrocketed. And so people were hanging on to them. If they move out of state, we still chase them. You know, the tax stays there. It doesn't go away. Fifteen years. And then it will drop off because we can't, we can't collect after fifteen.
The lien is against the motor vehicle because like we don't have a so I think you can't register vehicles, right?
Right.
Paid, but you can sell your house. So it doesn't attach to a house, for example, only attaches to the vehicle.
There's no lien on a motor vehicle.
Right.
Right, so the only power we have on that is a collection agency and stopping them at DMV. That's all we have. With this collection agency, they're getting charged one and a half percent interest. They're getting charged fifteen percent. They're getting blocked at DMV. I think that's a lot that they're getting hit with. I can escalate with the collection agency, which I did not do. I can affect their credit rating. And I just felt that that was a little excessive at that point. People were struggling enough and I didn't feel like I needed to go.
I think the process, yeah, I think the, I think the, I think the amounts, the fifteen percent and then the interest rate is, I personally think
Yeah, that's a lot.
And we don't have collection rates for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. We just have the breakdown of what they did collect and what part is principal and interest. But if the collection rates increased, have they, have they gone back up to like eighty percent as they were?
Patty's made in excess of her budget every year she's worked.
Yeah.
You're making excess of your budget because you're collecting regular.
The tax levy plus the delinquency, she routinely clears a hundred and three, a hundred and five percent of what she's
No, but I'm saying in twenty and twenty-one, the tax rates were sixteen, I mean, collection rates were sixty-nine and forty-one of the total. So those years were not great. And then I'm just asking, I'm assuming that in twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, a collection rate has gone up because it's post-COVID. I'm not asking, I'm not asking you to show the data. I know this is their data, what they have here, right? But I mean, so I just had a question, a question about
I don't know what those numbers are because this is what they gave me and I was sharing it with them, so I don't know what those numbers are.
But in terms of the total amount that you budget for a tax levy, that the Board of Finance budgets for a tax levy out of your office, you're in excess of that. I think you're, I think you're like eleven from eleven.
Yeah, yeah.
You've never not made budget.
I've never not made budget, no.
Oh, yeah, I think, I think that people, when they're we budget for a tax rate for normal and then you probably budget for tax rate or collection rate overall in general. So probably, I mean, the collection rates are typically here, they're running eighty percent is a good year and then the early years weren't so great. So those
These collection rates, you got to remember, these are people who have they they could have gone to jail.
This is also eighty percent of the tax rate for the delinquencies.
The delinquencies, right. This is not
This is not the general
No, I understand that. I'm saying their job, their job is, I'm not, I'm not criticizing you guys at all and they're probably doing a good job. They're hard to collect these things. All I'm saying was, and you said during COVID and post-COVID, it's true that the collection rates were down to like forty, forty-one percent in twenty twenty-one. That's the amount of, the amount that they were assigned, it says right here. The total placement with them versus the amount collected, about forty-one percent. So there's a gap there. I get it is hard and I'm glad we're not like filing lawsuits and putting, you know, deflections. People have to pay their, pay their taxes for the motor vehicles and I think chasing them this way with the tax, with the with the interest and with the collections is probably the best thing that we can do. But I'm not suggesting we go any further. And it looks like they're doing a good job. This company does as well as anybody. It's just hard to collect all of them. You just can't collect it all, right?
I think you have to take into consideration what person or what company is being looked at for the collection, even though the percentages have gone down, the dollar amounts have increased. So you have to take that all into consideration. You just can't pick and choose, make something look negative, got to take the whole thing and the overall amount that's being
Yeah, I wasn't trying to make it look negative either. I'm just saying that there, you know, we get stuck. At the end of the day, we get stuck with uncollectible taxes to some extent. That's just what happened, so.
You have to take into consideration though that the amount of delinquencies that I have are less because I have cleared up a lot of stuff. So you're not going to have these eighty percent delinquencies because I have shared it down.
That shows in your numbers actually.
Yes.
And good point, because if you look at the total placement in those years, the total placement is down to your rate.
And so, and I've already discussed with them that I used to place twice a year and now because of the less delinquencies, I'm only going to place once a year because there's not enough for me to do that.
That's a really good point.
So
Yeah.
This
Yes.
Good job.
Good jobs.
Any other questions?
Seeing that, I'd ask for a motion to authorize my signature on the renewal of the contract between the town and Tax Serve Capital Services LLC.
I move to approve the agreement for professional services between the Town of East Windsor and Tax Serve Capital Services LLC, the collection of delinquent taxes and other receivables, and authorize the signature of the first selectman.
Sir, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, a point of clarification as to, there was some confusion, I think, during public participation as to what this actually is. This is the same agreement that was brought before the selectman last week with the board. And I actually had talked to Dr. Trudon about whether or not even to revisit this. And then I spoke with Selectman Baker about it and he confirmed my suspicion that it may not have been clear what we were approving. The motion was to approve the nineteen thousand six twenty-five, not with the optional allowance as part of that. So before I executed this, I wanted to just bring it back to the board to get a clear understanding that that was what the intention was versus approving the whole amount. When I had spoken with Selectman Baker, not to put words in your mouth, but you had confirmed that that was a misunderstanding and that your intention had been for the whole thing.
Correct, that is
I just wanted, I just wanted an opportunity to clarify, we want the nineteen-six or the totality of the agreement? That's, that's the whole reason why this is here.
I think that's correct. I thought I made that motion, but you made
You actually, I, you did. You made the motion and, but I thought it included both numbers.
Oh, okay, yeah. And then we, I added, I tacked on that additional language about involving making, you know, community involvement as a priority, right?
But it wasn't clear, basically, even when I went back and looked at the recording, which, and that's why I wanted to say, it's not going to kill us to wait until Thursday. I'll just ask, did you want the whole thing or just a piece of it? So if you want to move forward as is, we don't have to do anything. If you want to move forward with the entirety of it, a motion or reconsider, and amend the motion will be appropriate.
I wanted just to do the basic scope of work because we were not going to go to the next step because there were concerns from members of the community and on the board here that we'd be moving too fast to get into publication materials and publicizing something and we really wanted to address, I thought we wanted to address the immediate concern of having the consultant on board so they can get community involvement and get, get it, move it, move the project along. So I just want to go with the
And I agree, that's how, that's how it started, but then I felt like it kind of evolved to everybody coming to an understanding, fully understanding what was going on. And to me, it felt like no, no point in splitting it up, you know, at that point in time. So I'm, I'm in favor of doing it together, yeah, reconsider.
All right.
Doing what together?
So, so we had
We want to approve the nineteen six twenty-five. That's all we want to approve.
Well, that's what we did and it wasn't clear if the intention was the nineteen six twenty-five or the whole thing and I figured the
Just the nineteen six twenty-five is my understanding.
That's what you, okay.
That's my understanding of what it was. But I also have another concern. For this phase of this, I think the building committee members not have been
Yeah, the agreement is going to have to say it's between the town and CSG.
Right, as long as you make sure it's between the town and CSG, then I don't have a problem with it.
Maybe Alan should make a motion to just do the second piece and then we can just debate the second piece. Would that make sense?
That's fine.
Alan wants to do that.
Yeah, I would make a motion to, to add the optional allowance of ten thousand five hundred dollars to the agreement for CSG.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Can we hold on, can we hold off on that optional allowance until after we see what they're going to reduce in the scope, once they start doing things?
I felt like we, we kind of went through all of that last time around and felt like, at least I felt like it was, you know, no point in waiting, like it's all part of, this is all part of that initial package. I mean, this is newsletters inclusive of the survey. Well, we're going to do the survey. Well, what do we want to do about the survey? We should really be able to publish the survey to people, you know, and and so it makes no sense to collect the data and then not really disseminate it, me, you know, so we're already down that path. We're not making any decisions as to what we're building yet, but we want everybody to know all the possibilities of what could be built. Right? And what's going to happen, what we're not going to do, which schools, what, all that stuff. So you got to be able to find out, you know, first, the first phase is finding out what everybody wants to do. And the second phase, which is really part of that first step, is to tell everybody about it. So we're cutting off the telling everybody. Like, doesn't make sense to me.
They're going to hold public information sessions and they're going to have media outreach and
And there'll be this many people at the public information and then not the eight thousand, what is it, ten thousand houses? No, it's five thousand four hundred households, right? We need to be able to get to them all in every possible way. Right? They don't, ten thousand or, excuse me, five thousand households aren't going to come to a meeting. But they will get mail from whatever way they decide, whether it's going through the school or just from the town publicly, whatever. We need some way, we need to be able to pay for getting all these people informed. So to me, it's, it's all part of the first piece, the very first piece, and no decisions are being made yet, really.
We don't lock into this now and it's, they want to do it at a later time. It's possible the dollar amount could increase too, right? And because this is all
Well, I didn't think about that, but that's, I guess, a possibility.
I think that's probably a small concern.
But it could, it could delay
It could delay it.
It could delay it because they, they're ready to go and then they got to, it could delay it thirty days because by the time back to us. I think, I think, I didn't realize that this was, thinking that this was publishing the survey because ten thousand five hundred dollars on a multi, you know, tens of millions of dollars project to get the word out about the survey. Because people will complain and say, I didn't hear what you guys were doing. And the survey is the last opportunity really for folks to come to the table and to weigh in if they have disagreements, right, with what happened with the survey. So I, I, it's not a lot of money to educate the community about where the group is and what the public thinks about it. So I'm okay with it. I'd rather put a little bit extra money into this project than put too little and find out that the community isn't going to support, support it when it comes time to vote because people say, I didn't know what was going on. And they're going to, they're not going to, they won't be educated enough to be behind the project. That would be a risk that we take if we don't put the money into making it possible for people to be educated about it.
Is it snowing outside?
I agree.
Further comments other than that one? All in favor of the added contract value of ten thousand five hundred?
Yes.
Aye.
I mean
Opposed? And I am authorized to sign that?
Of course.
All right. So we have two things that are incorporated in nineteen. The first is a license agreement for the drones, which it's written out for the Warehouse Point Fire Department, but that's a model that'll be used for both fire departments. And then the second piece of it is a policy which would be adopted by the town governing the use of those for town purposes. Now, that's not binding either of the fire departments to them, but it is affecting and actually the police department has their own drone policy. What this would cover is if we were to, like our cert team, if there were people who are certified in that capacity to serve as either a pilot for the drone or one of the line of sight spotters, sight spotters, is that what they're called? And then there needs to be some parameters under which that that's able to be used. This is, this is still a draft, but it's, it's been circulated to the fire departments. I don't have feedback from them yet. But I'm trying to get this across the goal line as quickly as we can so that we can effectively embed those drones within each of the two fire departments and we can get them up in the air if there's a need. Chief Carl, is there anything you want to add to that? Picking up storage space in the closet?
They're ready to go. The charge, they're ready to go. The training's been done. Our office given to the fire departments. Sooner than later, they'll help with quality of the
Questions or comments? Let's start with the license agree.
This
Let's hear it.
Thank you. So this has been distributed to both Broadbrook and Warehouse Point, but you haven't received any feedback is what you said?
That's correct.
Do we know why?
They just haven't had a chance to, Josh sent me a corrupted file on Friday, so I didn't get it to them until Monday.
I guess I have a question if you don't mind me asking.
Fireway.
I see it's highlighted, that thousand dollar amount on page three. I think it should be the cost of the drone itself, depending on which one is going where.
Well, that's, that's under the insubstantial damage provision. The section higher than that eight A talks about total or substantial damage.
Okay.
So that's just defining what is that threshold where it's, it's considered to be insubstantial.
And then I don't remember where I read it. Are we going to do a distinguish between the district, fire district? Because they don't belong to us, they're independent.
The license agreement would be between the Town of East Windsor and the Fire District and the Town of East Windsor and the Broadbrook Fire Department. They're each, they would each be obligated to cover, or to include both property and liability insurance. And then they would be governed by the terms of the license.
I just wanted to make sure. I push through it, but I'll flip to what I want to understand.
Okay, so and this policy is separate from the fire departments?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't have any jurisdiction over them, but this is town personnel, town use. And it's, we would need, we need to have some sort of policy. It's substantially similar to, although not as comprehensive as what the police department has already in place. But for volunteers who are in a civilian capacity, who might be trained to use it, what are the parameters? And what this basically says is you have to follow the FAA.
Right.
That's in large part what that policy says is this is what the FAA requires, this is what you're going to have to require in order to operate.
I just had one question on the policy where I just had one question on the policy where it asks for must receive preapproval from the department head or the town's first selectman. Is that? Preapproval in writing or verbal or just?
Give me a.
The first page of your the policy that's highlighted. How would you keep a record of who who's using it? And would you be giving the approval in writing to have a record or how or is that verbal?
Trying to figure out who the reference to the department head is. My intention would be to delegate the director of emergency management as the the record keeper of that and. Because I'm I'm not Matt is the one who's supposed to be in charge of that. So that that really, to me, is an EM function. I'm having to change it to say that.
I would agree.
That's a question.
Yeah.
Chief, how many how many drones do we have right now?
Currently have two brand new drones, the Matrix and the old Maverick. The Maverick's about eight years old, so we have a total of three drones that we can activate.
And are these I saw I I I'm not I I spoke with your deputy chief last time, just asking a little bit more information. I got some last last meeting, but. Are these like self-contained units that they have powers backup and supply? Or are they like standard drones that you that are out of the box that you have to? You know, assemble with the controller because I saw that that some police departments have first responders have like a drone system. Where it's in a box, it charges all the time. And is it that or is it is it is it? And what do these things cost like ballpark?
So the drone system itself is about thirteen little over thirteen thousand dollars per zone for the newer. These are what the newer ones, these are the ones that will be earmarked for the fire departments, about thirteen thousand six hundred dollars. They are in a Pelican box, a hard plastic Pelican box. It's it's all in one piece. You take it out, you fold it out. You assemble it, you put it on a launching pad, insert a battery, and then you have a handheld device that has an LED screen. With the sticks, that's about sixteen hundred dollars. The batteries are also there's twelve of them for each drone, so the batteries are self-contained in a separate Pelican box. With a charger. So as long as that's plugged in, you have all twelve batteries going at at one time. You replace that and then depending on parameters, how long we fly the thing, would would give you a battery life typically about maybe half an hour unless you're doing. Some of the other things, but these these are sophisticated. They have flair and they have the heat, the ability to see. There there these are enthusiast drones.
Yeah, I I get that thirty thousand dollars it better not be. So very enthusiastic. Are they? So we have three. We have an older one, two new ones. So plan that we're going to these two new ones are going to the fire department?
Yes.
So then I have a question because I thought I thought we were going to have drones readily available for police first responders. So that you'd be able to fly a drone at the scene of an accident or search and rescue. Without having to go to some door, I mean closet somewhere in another building, they'll be available to put right into the vehicles. Why are we? I don't mean to I'm not I'm not being critical of anybody. I'm just trying to understand why are we taking the two new drones from the not having them be for the police first responder?
I'm glad to ask. So our drone program is is about six or seven years old. We we have over the years struggled to be able to utilize them all the time. Because of the parameters that the FAA puts on it, you have to have a thrown operator and you have to have somebody that has line of sight. So typically, we had five, we've had five or six pilots within our department. Those pilots have elevated themselves into a leadership position or an investigator, so they're not always on duty or we have the ability to do that. So in the spring, when I had extra funds and I wanted you guys in the board stuff and what the process to transfer by two new drones. The idea was under emergency management, couldn't be the police department, police department funds, was to transfer those and get three. Similar drones by the three similar drones, have them in the two fire departments and the police department. But the idea that. If the police department needed it for a function that we had, we were lacking the ability to support it. And then pilot or observer, we could call TN or come up with a procedure where we could activate the fire departments. Then I will set a calendar and some agreement that we were supposed to work out. And that they would have the ability to do that and vice versa. They were tied up at a fire or some type of. Scene that they they couldn't support it, probably less likely because of their membership, but if they couldn't support it or they're asking us to do it, we could black them out. So the idea was that. At the time, I did not realize that we were going to run into insurance agreement and and some ideas about what what individual fire departments thought was to do. But I still stand by the idea, even though we've had some turbulence in this, we're trying to work through it. I still stand with the idea that town of East Windsor would be better served. Public safety wise, if we had the three drones, I I know that we have an old one, we can we have to replace ours coming up soon. I hope that we get the funding to replace it. Or the exact same drone, all will be the same, so that even we could have one. Drone on our drone or whatever, and they would all be consistent. It's like driving the same car, right? So. I would hope that we would have that and then we we could get there so all three entities could support each other.
So, you know, I think I'm not going to belabor the point, but I think the police use of the drones are different than fire department use of drones. Not just in terms of the actual function, but the law. Because you're not allowed to fly up and look in people's windows. The fire department wants to fly up and look in people's windows and in the roof and they want to surveil the house for. People and for fires and for everything and you guys have you can't do that. You're invading people's privacy. And I just saw in the news just tonight, the drones are being used in North in North Carolina, Florida. Because they don't have enough helicopter pilots and other people to get in these remote places and they're flying drones. It's doing great. I mean, it's really powerful. I think to me, it's a technology that's going to have to be root routine for everybody. So I personally think we should maybe get more drones.
And we're trying to get the the third one.
I also think I think the fire department should purchase the drones and if they don't have the money, I think we should front them the money and do a lease purchase. Because they're autonomous organizations with their own budgets. And so I don't know why we're doing a lease with them rather than they can buy our drones or they can buy their drones and we can. Help out by fronting the costs, no problem, but this is getting really complicated. About like having a lease agreement, license agreement with the fire department or the drones. I don't know. I think it's over complicating it.
Can I give a little history? As the liaison to the Warehouse Point Fire Department, they did were putting a drone in their budget, but. When the emergency management team came together to do this drone program, they took the they removed that money from their budget with the hopes that they would be having one of these drones. At their firehouse. This has been a plan that's been in place. However, there's been some hiccups with insurance and other things that are why we're here needing to have a lease agreement. But there's a little history and things as to why we are where we are. And I wish someone was here from Warehouse Point or Broadbrook to speak to this, but.
My my issue is not just the the relationship in terms of lease or purchase. The real issue I have is that I think that the police department should have the drones like in vehicles or in your SUVs. Or in the building ready to deploy without any delay. And so if there's a. Search and rescue or there's something that happens, there's no like. Time going to fire departments, getting into a closet, retrieving it or anything. I just think that. There has to be routine where the police department has it in their vehicles and likewise, the fire department should have it right in their vehicle.
You have to be a licensed pilot to operate the drone. Not everyone can operate it.
Got it.
If you have to be a licensed pilot, one has to be a pilot. Observer doesn't have to be, you just have to have a line of sight. And I agree with you on the policy for the police department moving forward and the vision is that we are going to have a designated supervisor car and the drone will be in that supervisor's truck. We also have increased our pilot pilots by two folks. It's inexpensive. We we. And you're correct in saying that we have greater parameters because of the court's decisions and what we can use them on, but the drones. Are definitely something that has to be embraced moving forward, both for fire and police. I think the fire departments use a blessing state of Connecticut, but they're coming on. Those are the utilities and the technology. There's actually communities that can use drones to launch them into schools and they will actually light up hallways, clear areas for school shooters. And identify where things are and they they gray out the parameters as they go through. Of course, we're we're restricted and we have a. Something about to talk about our policy. It's it's much more restrictive. And when the fire departments receive some of that, they they had pushback and rightfully so. Ours is restricted for a lot of reasons and. You know, I'm coming up with a policy that's for the fire departments individually needs to be on the fire departments. But what it needs to be a town is it's a town piece of equipment. Right now, it's registered to the police department. I would not give these drones up to the fire departments without taking our name off of that. Because in the event that they are misused, you get reported to the FAA and you're going to get a knock on the door by the FBI. We've seen it. I don't want to be part of it. Ours is very, very restrictive. Our officers will not. They have a set policy. There has to be a CMS number. A supervisor has to be aware and there's a whole set of things and then the data is downloaded and it's at the label. So I don't know how the fire departments will handle that, but they're but they're definitely capable of doing that. But these drones that we have right now will be stripped of registrations and restrict them.
This is this is also as bare bones as we could get it with sign off from our insurance carrier.
Right.
I mean, that's just we have a liability exposure here. This is as lean as I could make this without Kerma saying no.
But this is important for us to get it the program off the ground and get our emergency management in the town, all entities working together as one. And if we start picking and choosing who's going to pay for what and when they're going to pay for it, we're never going to get the program off the ground. So going just to start the program, I think this is the next one idea and that. You advance with the drone technology, you advance with the people's understanding of the drones and what they're capable of doing, like you said. Then the police department can add drones as they see fit for them and then it becomes I envision it then becomes the individual departments. If they want to add a drone, you know, that's up to you. But to get it taken off the ground and out there, I think this is the easiest and the best way to do it. This time.
Oh, you've been quiet.
I don't disagree with anybody. Okay, all good points.
Chief Carl, anything else to add?
No, I just I support it. I I honestly believe that both fire parks are going to be able to support each other. I've talked to both chiefs. But everybody has an understanding about how there's I think there's some touch occasion. I know this, how long it's taken, even to me, because I didn't realize we're going to get. But it's a risk management tool. There's a lot of restrictions. Heights. I think I think the Warehouse Point is going to find far more restrictions at Broadbrook because of Bradley Field. And so they're going to have to work through those and we have no problem helping them when they do that. I just they need to we have to have a risk management place. So I just hope that we can work through this and get them out there because I support it. I've always supported it.
Is is there? Can I answer the question?
Yeah, please.
Is there any steps in trying to do something with the Robert's old property or? Where the private airport is there? Because it seems to be hindering operations in that area.
We we have not been successful in that area because what is your drone indicates that you're in a restricted area. You have to call over Bradley that you gotta get a light, you gotta get a code. You enter that code and they allow you to fly. Bradley does not control that Robert's airstrip. Robert's airstrip is still. Considered a no-go zone, but there is nobody, no contact list, no way to contact to change that or get that code. So that's always been very restrictive. We've had our sergeants and our administrator, Sergeant Billis, who's very, very first of all of the. Policy side of this, trying to work through that red tape and we we have not been successful at being. You can take the controller and remove that that safety feature. I I I will, I would, I would discipline one of my officers for doing that. And I was safety features are in place because if you interfere with the flight of a of a plane, I would not want to get in any of them. You can fly it, but you just disable all those features and set it up.
I'm not asking you to disable anything.
We don't do that. So when we're.
My question clearly was, there's no confusion. Have we done anything to try to get it off the restricted list?
We have not been.
Okay.
So yeah, back to where you started. You said that the fire departments didn't respond yet, but I'm saying it's.
They have they have responded that they haven't had a chance to respond yet. It's not like they've.
It's not like they didn't see this.
They have seen it, yes.
I mean, but like there's nothing a surprise like you've been working together on what this would look like, right?
Yes.
So it's not like none of it is surprising. They've had input into this agreement.
They haven't offered much input thus far. They've had opportunity to do that, but they haven't they haven't said that, you know, we're good with this language yet.
Okay.
I think that's fair way of putting that. Would anybody like to make a motion for any action?
I guess I'll start with. Lease agreement here.
License.
License agreement. That's what I wanted to get back to. That's what I didn't misspeak. Do we need to? So we just need to approve this for you to sign this?
Yeah, I mean, there's there's a couple of things.
There's some comments here that like.
Like so, for example, the the five year duration of the license that. Even as the note indicates, that's somewhat arbitrary. We can pick whatever time we want. It should just the attorney's point was that it shouldn't be open ended.
Is there an evergreen? I mean, why would you have to like you don't want it to expire, right? Like.
Well, this is so it that the license will actually reference the specific drone that is being used and sooner or later, that drone is going to be. Not in here.
This goes with the drone?
Yeah.
Okay. Not like with the department?
No, it goes with it goes with the equipment.
Three years on just for the life of the drone?
Yeah, so it would.
Wait, I'm fine with that.
I agree. I think that makes because I can see them using it for more than five years. They don't get funded for another one.
I don't want to word that.
Shall expire after?
I don't know how I want to word that with this sentence.
Drone is inoperable and or discontinued. It's used.
Well, it's.
Retired.
No wonder.
I guess.
That's just the spec.
The other comments are just.
I actually think the hundred or the thousand dollar is not appropriate one, given the initial purchase and what is. In substantial damage. That's the only thing I would change. So I would just change two way to to say that. Bought automatically shall expire automatically immediately upon the date which the drone is no longer in use.
Or inoperable. Maybe redundant. Service.
I'm going to make the motion. I just made the motion with the Kathy market. Both fire departments and police department are all in agreement with it before you sign it.
Well, they have to sign it, so we're just authorizing him to sign it.
There's there's a roadblock. I'll be back.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize the first selectman to sign the. Drone license drone license agreement with. Both fire departments, right?
Yep.
Both fire departments.
Again.
Come with.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? It's going to be a separate one for them. Yeah, it's going to be the same thing, but it's formatted for each individual. Now, how about the policy?
On three dash nine is that where it's going to be EMS director there where you have that blank space? Or who is?
Oh, yeah, it will be the director of emergency management. Oh, yeah, it will be the, uh, director of emergency management.
You can have some comments also.
Correct. Where?
Oh, the, the, the couple of highlighted sections that have to do with, um, these ones are employees and departments. With permission of department head or the town first selectmen. So. So I don't have any problem. We just talked about emergency response and public safety. No issue there. Um. I'm worried about town employees just sending up drones and the public's perception. About drones flying around their homes, complaints about invasion of privacy, whether there would be invasions of privacy. Um, drones flying over people, you know, people's car homes and their yards are, and I'm not saying it in a malicious way, but. I mean, so, okay, so you have a, um, covert repair needs to be done. You want to send up a drone. That makes sense, right? To assess the. The area from the top. That's a good idea. But what if, um. What if, uh, planning and zoning, I mean, the, uh, does the person who does the zoning enforcement person. Wants to check out some property and wants to fly a drone to see if there's a violation, wetlands violation or a.
That's why they would need mass permission to do that. And the drone is going to be embedded in the TV.
So I don't, I don't know if I want to have yet. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure if I'm ready yet for town employees to be flying drones. Into our community without. Hearing from the public about how they feel about the use of drones surveilling their property. Purposefully or inadvertently. I mean, this, the concept of a drone flying around my house, for example, I would be offended if a drone was flying over my house. Just because it's my home and my property. I don't want anybody flying a drone on my property, not public safety or something. And I have nothing to hide, but I just don't want a drone there. I just got shot a drone out of the sky on YouTube or something with a shotgun. I mean, I'd like to hear from the public to see whether they have a positive or negative perception of the use of drones in the community. And.
Speaking of someone with your phone. So we, at our drill program, we were contacted by a local. We were asked to launch it for the very reason they were going to survey a park. You're not allowed to fly the drone if it's going to impede anything because it's not all safe. You can't fly the drone for that purpose if you're going to be on anybody else's. Private property or if it's going to be in a dispute of anything, meaning the town is using it to dispute something that somebody else is going to have to. You can't do that. That's, that's not, that's for us, we couldn't do it. What we did in this scenario was they were just basically, we were able to fly it for them. Because after we did our due diligence, there was no complaint. The town is using it to lay out a park, a property that they own. So there was no competing interest or anybody else that had standing in the case. But you have to do your due diligence. If you just launch the thing and you just willow the nilly because you get curious or you're going to do something, you will get yourself in trouble. And that's where our policies are very restricted. I, I can allow that our supervisors do. We take a CAD entry, it's in a computer, supervisor's aware of it, drone operators are aware of it. And they review the policy and in the end the policy is reviewed, signed off. On the individual flight, not only is that individual, if the thing is activated, we have software within the police department. That tracks every data point that that thing, how fast it went, where it went, how it went. If you don't have those parameters in place. You, you have to work on it. You have, you have to get that software, figure that out.
But this policy would allow, um. This policy would theoretically allow a department to purchase their own drone. And with the department head's permission or the first selectman's position, no offense, they could just send it up. They'd have to go through you. And.
Nobody's buying a drone.
Well, you know, drones are very cheap. I mean, you can try to buy a drone now for. A what?
Fifteen grand.
No, you can drive by a drone for $300, a high quality drone for 500 of that. You can get a great quality drone for $1,000 and you can get a decent quality drone for 300, $400.
But I could buy a drone tomorrow and fly it over your house.
But you're a private citizen. But the town doing it is, is, so I'm just saying that chief, you know, people are, they, they wouldn't necessarily have to go through you for this. And then we could have. Anyway, I'm, I'm, I think the policy. I don't, I'm, I'm not comfortable with a policy yet that says that. Town employees with permission of department heads can buy a drone in town. Because as you said, there's a lot that goes into it. And if they need to maybe do a infrastructure project, it's, it's important. You can hire a drone operator probably for a couple hundred dollars to, to do the work legally, right? They're licensed and they do it legally. So and there's people out there, a lot of people that will do that. So we can hire someone for a few hundred dollars to, to do a Culver question. Okay.
Correct. And I, I want to clarify myself. But my concerns have been conveyed to the both of the fire chiefs. They understand that. I don't have concerns that they would do anything finally, but I think they understand this very. Any department head, I'm not sure. You're right. I guess maybe the building department can buy a drone, fly it, it might be in control. I would not want that attached to me because if I didn't know about it. I'd, I'd be angry.
Or would, but they would have to follow the eligible uses and ineligible uses of it, or say confound himself in legal. Difficulty.
It could, it could be true. I'm still getting concerned about public perception as much as also the legal thing. If, if a drone is flying near somebody's house and it's a town employee and they're surveilling for. Um, hey, did you, uh, you know, cut a tree down in your backyard, right? That's in the wetlands area or something. I, I just don't think we're at that point where we want to be using this technology to go in people's backyards. To see what they're doing. Not that people shouldn't get in trouble for doing bad stuff. You know, they're cutting stuff down, but. I just don't want to, I'm, I don't think we're ready as a town. There was a lot of like conversation around ordinances, you know, the tax amendments and other stuff where. You know, people's. Vehicles on their back property and unregistered vehicles, it has to be out of sight and I just don't want to see drones. I don't think this town is ready to have drones flying around to see if, if people have, uh, unregistered vehicles in their backyards.
You go online and pull up your property and my camper shows, my car shows in my yard, my pool shows. Um, so if I want to see what somebody has in the yard, I just go to that website, follow up your property and. I can see what vehicles you have in your yard. So.
That's true.
Yeah.
That's true.
So Keith, take a look at three, two and three, three, and let me know. What's in three, two that you take on bridge?
Well, I've been just kind of following along here, but I, and I'm trying to remember, I can't remember. I have similar concerns and, but I think it's also. Legal to be used in like planning and zoning and wetlands. Um. For those uses. And I think it's been used, we've hired in the past for, for drones to be used. For evidence for those types of things.
Right.
But I agree that we should know that really well and get it into the policy of how we're going to deal with those things. Because that does get sticky and there's been case law in Connecticut and I just can't, I couldn't. Find it right now, um, because it's been a while since I thought about this, but. That, you know, where people have been just fine doing it and where the, you know, towns have run afoul of it as well. So. We, we probably ought to look into that from the standpoint of like, who can use it for what? Specifically wetlands and planning and zoning, they, they do have legit uses for it. And they also, you know, there, there's also could be, you know, some landmines there, you know?
Well, you want to strike, uh, Ag and Environmental Monitoring?
Well, well, I don't want necessarily, I don't want to, I don't want to say we're not going to do it when it's legal to do because we may, may be in our interest to do it. Right?
I could tell you this policy was, was drafted by Paul, so it's legal.
Just general use of the drone. I'm just talking specifically for. You, for conflicts, right? For planning and zoning violations, wetlands violations.
Illegal surveillance, invasion of privacy or specifically ineligible uses?
Like, so currently they will drive around a neighborhood looking for unpermitted sheds and pools and you can't really see it all. So is it legal to drive your, fly your drone around that neighborhood and look for sheds and pools? I want to know, like, before, and I may or may not have an opinion on that, but like, I want to know, is that a legit use? We need to be able to tell our, our. Our folks, our staff, that that's not a legit use or yes, it is. And then everybody should be aware of it, right? So I kind of agree with, 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 uh. Keith on that standpoint, that we should just maybe look into that a little bit more and, and point it out and put it in writing. What we can and will or won't do, you know?
To a more granular degree than you see here in three, two and three, three.
I, I think, I think this puts the burden on the town employee to understand all these, these. It just says basically the town employee or the department head or whoever's doing it. Understands all this stuff, but it doesn't say like, it doesn't say what the, what the guardrails are. And it's not explicit, you know, um. And again, I, I mean, my feeling is like, I, I'm not going to ask people to raise their hand, but if I said in this room, you know, who supports the use of drones to. To surveil properties for violations or, um. For anything, you know, variety of things, even if it's legal. People, you know, people may say, no, I don't really want, the town isn't ready for that. And everyone else may say, I don't care. That doesn't bother me, but I'd like to know what the public feels about it a little bit more before we, we say, hey, it's okay. We're just going to do this. Because this is not, this is not a small thing. This is, you know, the discussion tonight is, is, is a conversation that a lot of communities are having about privacy. And, you know, especially in like, you know, more urban areas. Um, you know, these things are flying up, even in local areas, they're flying up, they could be looking in people's windows. Looking for, you know, we got to look in people's windows to see if they're doing construction on their home and to see if they pulled a permit or I don't know. Right?
I agree. The city of Harper prohibits drones. They don't have any drones in city of Harper. They don't allow.
And, and to speak to the granularity, it said, you know, so ineligible uses, uh. It says illegal surveillance or invasion of privacy. Well, what is illegal surveillance or an invasion of privacy? Is it legal for me to use it in a planning and zoning context or a wetlands context? I can think of in wetlands, a number of uses I would think would be great. But I'm, I'm not sure that we know exactly if they're legal. I'd just like to know a little bit more of that. I don't think we're holding anybody else up, right? We don't even have a drone. They got their own policy. The fire departments have to have their own policies. So I think we're not holding anybody up if we just go a little bit deeper into like, what does this actually mean? Where, where's the red lines? Um, because I don't want to assume that we can't use them. And if we are going to use them, to Keith's point, people should know about it. Um. And then I, I want to know that, you know. Illegal surveillance, what does that mean in, in the context of what we do? You know, because EMS, all that, that's. Kind of everybody else, it's really not. I guess. Partially our, our, our bailiwick, but you know, we're more concerned with if we're flying drones. It's going to be public works flying a drone for some reason. It's going to be wetlands for some reason. It's going to be planning and zoning for some reason. Or maybe parks and rec wants to fly it just for like a recreational use. Is that? Is that, you know, if somebody has a problem with that because you're flying it over a park and they think you can see into their yard. Do we have a, you know, are we on solid ground? Somebody going to give us a bunch of grief that we've got to spend money on? To win or we'll lose, whatever, but I just like to know these things and have them out there.
I would think it's going to be similar to what Facebook is. It's an open book. Anybody can say and do whatever they want.
Okay. I think there's some guidance. Yeah.
You know, but this is their ramifications put in this policy. If anybody goes above the scope of what they're authorized to do. And it's not going to be anybody, whoever in the town is. Going to do something, they're going to have to be licensed to. The FAA.
And that's just covers the operation, like you don't fly it this way, you don't fly it that way.
And that in itself is going to become, I'm sure that'll become a union issue over and above what their requirements are now. So you have all of those things that are going to become coming forward, um.
You don't need to, I'm sorry, you don't need to have a license for certain, for drones that are certain size and don't.
We just don't need the license. But we're operating on, this is our public safety.
Right.
Public safety exception, the search warrant rules generally is the police fire. We could, we could do it because there's a public safety. What you guys are talking about is an individual agency being able to do that. An example of, of a violation of privacy. I think you want to be able to just discipline employees when they do that. I could fly my drone 400 feet in the air. You're not going to see it or hear it. Then I can read what's on your text message.
Yeah.
But if somebody did that, you want to be able to discipline them. That's not going to happen with us. If it did, you would know it, but you want to know it, be able to discipline that person. So beyond that policy, I think you're talking about us, public safety, police and fire, we're pretty much exempted. From that and the public safety exception when you're flying it, unless there's a parade or you're trying to do that, can't fly it over people. That's an avenue. So I mean, there are restrictions. You got, you have to stay. I think you want to be able to discipline an employee that was, that, that. Getting at that.
Well, the discipline is part of it, but again, I'm, I'm, I'll go back to the community's perception. And the community's feeling about it. And if somebody sees an invasion of their privacy and they saw a drone operated from the town doing that. And then, and it was a violation of their privacy, that'd be pretty upsetting. Regardless of the measure of discipline, it's the fact that we've invaded a resident's privacy in a way we shouldn't have done it as a community. I think that's a, that's a, that's a question that we want to take that risk. And, and, and you know, the operator could be, nothing against maintenance people, but it could be someone who just got hired, you know. Four, 30 days ago and is, is doing maintenance work or it could be a new, a park and rec temporary employee. That's, uh, doing an event and was asked to, to, to do something and then is flying around neighborhood or something. We don't know. Um.
Jason, did you say that this policy would pertain to cert members as well or no?
Yes.
Okay, because they're not really employees of the town or of a department. They're volunteers who would be activated possibly by. The chief or someone who is, okay, because the policy statement where it says. Employees in departments who wish to use it in conjunction, but they're not, they're really neither. Unless I'm missing something, which is possible.
I just would like to see, I'd like to get some updated information or more detailed information, I guess, on. What a municipality is allowed to do or is not allowed to do. And, and then we need to. Speak to that in this policy to, so people really know where it is. Yeah, I mean, because you're, you're going to get complaints, you're going to get questions, you're going to get concerns and we need to know that we're on solid ground or. Not be surprised about what we did.
I mean, I'm happy, I'm happy to reply. I think we've gone very far down a rabbit hole here because there, there are no departments that are going to buy a drone without going through the budget process. Um, but I mean, I, I'm happy to get the clarion here.
Well, I'm assuming if we have a drone policy, it's so we can have a drone. We don't, if we're not going to have a drone, let's not have a policy.
Well, we have to have drone for the.
Policy for the.
That's what, that's what Kerma's requirement is. You know, we can't have, we can't be using volunteers through, through EM. And not have them governed by something.
Yeah.
So I mean, alternatively, just put them under the police department's policy, but that's going to be, they're probably not going to be eligible under that.
Wouldn't work. I just think, you know, once we get this in place, it's going to be in place and we don't want to make assumptions about. You know, the usage will evolve. This, you know, as we start to adopt this more, we're going to probably end up with a drone that we, you know, you're using for other things. Who knows?
So then make this, make this one strictly for. The emergency management policy. And then down the road, we come up with another policy for town employees and just strip that. Statement out of them. Think it'd be all right.
That's the way to do it too.
Because we don't want to hold this away.
Yeah.
That would be, that would be quicker and easier.
I'm good with that. If we restrict it to emergency management use only, then we don't have to worry about. Theoretically.
I agree with that.
Okay, good solution.
And I might have, you want you to do something later on. Just kidding. But there is somebody in town that gets hired that has done like the old community day events. You fly it around the field, taking photos and stuff and put it out there for people to see. So that happens.
All right, that's a good solution.
Do we need to approve it that way?
Yes.
Uh, no, I, I, they're going to have to do a pretty wholesale rewrite of that.
Okay.
But it, it's more clear with what it is that we're looking for. So I'll be back in a couple of weeks. Building Commission's recommendation about the engagement for architectural service. Okay, so everybody is aware that Steve Jaeger, the architect on the community center project sadly passed away in early July. Um. The building committee, permanent building commission, sorry, Paul. Um, took some time in terms of determining, uh, whether or not to accept the only response that the town had. From the RFP, which is from a company down in Shelton. Um. The USDA was consulted and the, um, town attorney, Rick Robinson, was consulted. Um, about whether or not, um, an architect was necessary at this point. And the recommendation from the permanent building commission is in your packet, says that. Um. The commission voted six, two to, to move, to vote to move forward without hiring a new architect pending a modification to the owner contract or agreement. And recommended the board of selectmen, same, um, and then it gives me the vote tally, um, but. That's what their recommendation is, is to, to continue on as we are. Um. So I'll leave it there. I have one other thing pertaining to that that we need to discuss. After.
So I make a motion that we entertained, um, the recommendation by the permanent building. Committee, um, based upon the information provided on their May 23, 2024, um, building committee meeting. As recommended.
Is there a second?
Second.
May it and seconded, discussion.
Well, I, I watched all of their. Well, I I watched all of their, I watched all the building commission meetings and I listened to all the commentary. And I watched each person who voted and their comments and the reasons for voting. And it was pretty clear. Um, either we replace the architect. Or we have the the building, the the company that's doing the building. Agree to take responsibility as the engineer signing off on the project.
Yes.
And this proposed language. So. I'm okay with that, of course, because there's a responsible party who's gonna have insurance that's gonna be responsible if there's a collapse or a problem with this building. That's gonna take responsibility. And that's what, that's the whole reason for the replacement architect, because. At this point, the project is designed and it's moving along and they're doing changes. But the changes are not changing the architecture so much. But there could be structural changes happening right now and they would be subject to liability if if. Or even if, you know, something happened, the collapse of the building or the failure of the building or. We got stuck with a poorly designed and constructed building. So. So the town attorney had very specific language that they have to agree to. I honestly don't know why they would agree to it because they're not getting paid to. Accept more responsibility and liability. Like, why would they want to? Say, yeah, we're gonna accept liability for everything happening after the architect. For the same cost that they got paid for. They're not, who would do that? I don't have, I don't know why they would do that unless they're doing us a favor. So I think we need to be careful here. How do we proceed? The 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 vote, I don't think, no disrespect to the motion, but. We shouldn't say we're gonna do what the building commission suggests. We should say either we're gonna replace the architect. Or we're going to require. That the um, that the builder, the building company doing the building. Um, sign this language that obligates them to the responsibility.
Because I too attended that meeting, previous meetings. Um, those that I haven't attended, I have watched. Um. In the motion, it's clear and simple. Um, and you're right, they did say there were certain things that were gonna happen, which those are in place, I'm sure already. Um, because they said they uh, got the write up and stuff. So um, anyone's free to look at.
Marie, maybe, maybe I could make a suggestion for bending the motion or just throw a concept out there. We could say that, um, you know, we authorized the the first selectman to obtain the. The sign off from the uh, from the uh, builder, right, as required by the town attorney within. Say, two weeks or three weeks. And if we don't receive that, then we hire the architect that submitted the bid. To the building commission because. Time is the essence here. If we don't get this taken care of and 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 change orders are in effect. And things are happening with that building, we've lost the opportunity to have oversight over that gap.
But I have a public works department that's overseeing the project and they're working with all the entities along with the first selectmen and working to make sure that all. Procedures and all the. Criteria for the grant money is being followed through properly. Um, so. I think a simple motion. Serves a purpose because the people are gonna do their jobs that we entrusted to do them when we hired them or put them in office.
Marie, Marie, the 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 person that's overseeing this project is not a licensed engineer. And that's the same person who said to proceed with the project without an architect, period. And then the building commission came back and said, we want to know. And and also like the USDA, he said the USDA is fine with it, but the USDA wasn't fine with it. The USDA says you need to get a replacement responsible party. And then they're fine with it. So, you know, I'm. The the attorneys weighed in, the USDA's weighed in, either they sign the language and become responsible party, or we have to get an architect. We can't proceed with this project without. Without a responsible party. We are uninsured for risk. For a building that's cost millions of dollars for anything that occurred following the the architect's death. We're completely uninsured for that.
That is not correct.
Who's insuring us for an architectural defect? In the project after the architect died. His insurance is over when he died. He's not do, he's not the architect on the architect on the project anymore. So who is? Who is gonna insure us if that, if there's a, if there's a collapse of that building due to an architectural defect?
Structural engineer.
It's good. Have him sign off the form as required by the attorney. The structural engineer is gonna sign off and say, I accept liability and responsibility. For this project, just like the town attorney is requiring. It would be so foolish of us, honestly, to. And 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 the building commission said the same thing. There's not one person on the building commission said, we don't need to proceed with. Out the sign off or without the architect. Everybody on there said, and the referral came back and said, get the language. Signed off by the engineer. Nobody on the building commission said, go forward with this project without oversight.
Sure.
Um, first of all, I do appreciate and want to thank all the members of the building commission for their work. Um, the members have a lot of experience. It was, there was really good, healthy discussion amongst everyone. Um, and I think they took their role role very seriously. Um, I do have a question. If we were to proceed without the architect, um, is it the fire marshal or the building inspector? Do they have to be more involved as far as sign offs for things?
They need to sign off as to everything being compliant with code.
Okay, um, I do agree with Keith. Um, I think we do need to have, make sure that there is sign off. Um, from the builder. I I am concerned if something does go wrong in the future. The liability purposes for the town. I do think we need to have writing the independent oversight. Just to cover ourselves. Not that I don't think our town employees are not capable. I just think having that. In place is a wise decision.
If an architect kisses brand to the builder and the builder doesn't follow what the architect had said and something happens, that's not the architect's problem. That then becomes the builder problem and their liability. My understanding of our projects work. Um, and I have limited experience. I did the addition to the old traveler fold in on Kennedy Road. Um, but that would be my input from those days.
So who is, who is responsible for making sure that everything is currently being followed to that the architect's designs?
That's, that's the structural engineer at this point. And the next thing we need to do is I want to formally designate the director of public works as the owner's representative, which is another oversector.
Yeah.
Licensed engine.
Yeah, he's a P.
Right.
So they, they also, uh, uh, Pullman and Conley did provide the modification language, which BRD would have to sign.
Have they seen it?
Uh, have we shared this with them?
So many emails going back and forth. I don't know where the attachment is.
This is the one Rick Robinson sent on August eighth.
Um, building committee, I think it was included in the email. That's the email with the. The responses from USDA and I think it was part of that holding bell chain.
Yes, it was.
That they they all got that exact email. That was just forward to the building.
No, BRD has seen it.
BRD has not seen it. BRD will see it as soon as. You guys make your decision, then we involve that.
Okay.
Fully aware of what's going on. They're, um. You have a construction meeting last week. You were there with the USDA.
Yeah, they were, Ryan was was excited for this to happen.
And the owner of BRD is is right there. They're, they're slowly gathering impatient because. But. They're ready to keep going forward. We're we're down. Structural engineer. Is still working. It works for us now. And the mechanical engineer works for us. They sign off on everything. They've approved everything. They've both agreed to work in conjunction with, if there's any questions, we send them to them. They also. Have a building inspector and ultimately structural will sign off and his stuff at the end of the project. A mechanical will try to sign off on their stuff. And the building inspector and the fire marshal will sign off. And all our, all our ducks are in a row. Structurally, the building's done. We have a third party inspector that's inspected it. We have all those reports, all the wells, all the bolts. All of that's been done and inspected per the contract. And it's all passed right down to the concrete. And we got a report today of. That they keep monitoring, see how much pressure will hold. And it's right to spec. Everything has been built or if it wasn't done, it was prepped.
But the, but the issue was in, the issue was necessarily, are they building it the way they're supposed to build it? The issue was, did the architect design it properly? And and you won't know that if unless there's a, unless there's a failure. And that's why people have have insurance and that's why architects have insurance. That's the whole purpose of of ensuring your risk. And so the architect puts their, they put their 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 insurance on the line. When they, when they, uh, for the design that they did. If there's a problem, I mean, when a, when a major, when a building collapses. Right, from a, from a design defect. That's the responsibility of the architect's insurance company. Now, the architect died. And we need to have, we need to have in risk management from that point out forward. And and not only for just the design, but change, the change orders occur. And so we have to have that. And and the town attorney has said, yeah, do it by having the builder accept responsibility for that, for that.
That's, that's right here.
Yeah. So, you know, I'd like to, I'm gonna offer an amendment to the motion to, um, to, uh. That we, uh, we obtained the the signed, um, agreement with the builder. And that if it's not signed by the next meeting. That that we have, we take up this issue again and make a decision. As to whether or not we're just gonna skip it and and hire the replacement architect. So we make, we're in control of the decision. About how to manage the risk of this project. And the first, the first, so I'm gonna make that motion that we, um, that we direct the first selectmen to, um, to, uh. Contact the builder and obtain a signature on the attorney's required language concerning, um. Same responsibility for the, oh, I'm sorry, oversight for the, um, for the work.
So what's the motion that's on the table?
Approve the recommendation as it's.
Okay. And repeat your modification.
That we direct the first selection to obtain the the sign off by the builder. On the, um, on the language that's been prepared by the town attorney.
Good.
And then, uh, that would be, that would be the amendment to the motion.
And if it doesn't get signed, it comes back to us.
And if it's not signed by the next, by our next meeting, we.
Is that sufficient time where they haven't seen it yet? So their lawyer hasn't.
Well, we could discuss it. Why don't we discuss it at the next meeting, put on the agenda and say, listen, they, you say that they didn't have sufficient time during the works, they're finishing it. Or that they said no, so we can make a decision because the time is stretching here, you know? So we, I I'd like to, I'd like for us to stay in control of this. And we know the path. And I agree, Jason, if if there's a problem in two weeks. We just hear about it and then we can decide, right?
So the structural engineer and the mechanical engineer, do they have their own insurance or they?
Their stamps are on the plans. They're the ones responsible. Structural engineer is responsible if. It falls down. Mechanical engineers are responsible if. The, but the electrical shorts out, the electrical wasn't, anything electrical, anything heating at HVA, you know, heating the HVAC and the water. And the MEP is also responsible for designing the sprinkler system.
I haven't driven by in at least a week. Is the envelope one hundred percent?
Um, doors are plywooded up, windows are in, air a hundred percent sealed up, all studded, roof electrical is about eighty percent, roof plumbing is about sixty percent. Um, and they're currently building walls. And the the roof still has to have its final rubber put on it. We're working on some.
So the roof's not complete either, right? So.
Right.
What's the overall completion of the project at this point, you think?
Right now, this point, probably forty five percent, almost.
Would have been a ways to go.
Yes. As far as interior sheet rock drywall, outside siding, that comes.
I I don't think it's, I'm gonna say, I don't think it's correct that the building falls down, the structural engineer is responsible. Structural, I think the structural engineer is responsible for determining what what the size beams need to be, how they need to be tied together. Um, they're responsible for the engineering for the structure itself, which is primarily the steel.
The structural engineer that was hired did the design for the build.
But they did the design for the steelwork. The arch, the architect designed the building. He said, we're gonna have a roof at this pitch. We're gonna have overhangs at this pitch. We're gonna have dimensions of this way. And then the structural engineer came in and said, this is the structural. Members that are gonna hold this building up, okay? But the, but the design of it in the first place is what the structural engineer is is designing it for. And so they, and I I don't disagree with you.
No.
But they all worked together.
Also, that the architect that we had. Worked very, very closely with the structural engineer. They done. A lot of projects together and, you know. It wasn't like he said, I want a thirty foot trap around. Tell me what kind of steel. The the structural engineer actually physically worked on the design with them.
Yeah, and that's, that's the way it should be. And 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 that's, we're just, we're just talking about the risk for the engineer, I mean, for the architect. And saying that the builder will accept that risk by signing this document. And that's, that's all we need. And then we're, we're, we've covered our risk. And if they refuse, then we're probably gonna be, I'm gonna be sitting here saying, we better hire an architect because if we don't have risk covered, we're in trouble. And maybe people will disagree, but I think we'll all agree at that point, right? So. I don't know if I got a second for my motion.
I don't think so.
Right.
Second it.
All right.
But didn't we have a motion on the table? So this is a method.
The motion on table.
Got it.
Yeah.
So does Marie have to accept that?
Yes, I would have to accept it for it to be legal.
No.
Or we have to vote on it.
It's vote.
Okay.
Vote on the amendment.
She could accept it as a friendly amendment without a vote, or we have to vote, Jason, right?
I'll, I'll draw my motion and you can make whatever motion you'd like. How's that?
All right.
Well, off.
Yeah, I, but I like your motion to amend it. I'll make a motion that we direct the first selectmen to. Obtain the signature from the builder on the language that's been proposed by the town attorney. Um, in order to address the risk issue for the architect. Um, and that's the motion. Okay, and then.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed.
Obstain.
Obstain?
Yep.
Okay. All right, next. All right, next thing. It's a master municipal agreement between the state DOT and the town. Um, this is boilerplate language that DOT uses for municipalities that are doing projects that are funded by the state. Um, the particular reference that is applicable to East Windsor, if you guys are just looking for an example, is, um. The culvert replacement on Highland Avenue. Um, that's DOT, Connecticut DOT dollars. Um, it's a project that's being done locally with DOT dollars. They will not give us the money unless we have an updated master municipal agreement in place. Um, if we were to do other such, uh, programs over or projects over the next ten years. Um, this, this, uh, master municipal agreement would govern that. So that's. You know, for replacing a bridge and we're using town dollars.
Oh, that's also.
The spillway, the spillway, no, that's, that's not DOT, that's the EEP. Different, it's a different, same, same concept, different agreement, but it's not DOT dollars. The culvert on Highland is DOT, the spillway is DE.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk, the sidewalk is, so the connectivity grant is another example of a DOT project that would fall on.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the first selectmen to sign the master municipal agreement. For a construction project on behalf of the town of East Windsor.
Second.
Uh, further discussion?
I haven't read this in its totality.
Boilerplate. That's because it's the longest contract we've seen.
I I'm assuming it's boilerplate, so I have to hear anything that's not been the norm over the years.
It's, it is.
I guess I'm not put it out there.
It is what you sign if you want to get state dollars. Yes.
Files. Bridge project. This would evoke. At the tenure.
This, no, this is, um, that, that the DOT is doing that project. If the town were doing that project using state dollars, this would, this would apply. Um, the DOT is doing that project on a state road. That's not, that is not the same agreement. Um. That's their right to do and they use half a dollars to do it. Uh, no, in bipartisan infrastructure dollars to do it.
Probably an equally long contract, though.
But that one's between the feds and the state, so I mean, not our, not our concern.
Oh, but. And DOT. Now, yes, it was brought up. We went to a meeting, WPC, they went to a meeting with DOT on the. WPC, a rental meeting with DOT on the moving of the sewer. And that's the exact document they brought up. And because it's the town sewer. They are removing it and replacing it in that area. And WPCA is going to be filled in excess of $100,000 because of depreciation, all in that massive verbiage. I spent a whole morning in DOT on that subject, and that's exactly what they do with this stuff. It sounds like just a bunch of words, but it's not just a bunch of words.
Thank you. There's a motion on the table. Discussion from the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed? All right. All right, uh, the next one is a memorandum of agreement between the town and the Board of Education pertaining to, um, the Youth Services Bureau. Um, I've got some information on this, but first, Chief Carl, you've been a good sport and hung in here the whole time. Um, is there anything you want to add about this before I do my thing? What's that?
Unless anybody has spoken, I'll wait for everybody to speak.
Fair enough. Um, so this is this is, um, what this will allow for is the folks who are doing the YSB work to have access to information that's in the care and custody of the Board of, uh, Education and for, um, confidentiality concerns to extend to anybody who's doing YSB. Um, but still have access to that information. Good?
Excellent.
All right.
We use a progress on that everything called building direct.
Yes.
And it's restricted for who can see it based on permissions. The Board of Education has, when they're dealing with kids that are tier two, there is perp up concerning such protection of their Ohio scales and all the studies and all the things that they do with the education program. We cannot see that unless you have if it's necessary to.
Uh, it's been signed by Dr. Tootren.
Make a motion to authorize the first selectmen to sign the memorandum of understanding between the East Windsor Board of Education and the Town of East Windsor on behalf of the Youth Service Bureau.
I can't.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Um, Chief, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
The, um, so the the youth, the youth, I like that, the youth, the youth is with the, um, their person that they're working with. And they talk about stuff that is, uh, you know, kind of like crazy, you know, their behavior and stuff. And is that going to go back to the school where schools can have access to those conversations where the student says, yeah, I feel this way about this, or feel and it might be the school might have concern about like, it's not, I I assume they're they're mandated DCF reporters, but if it's not like that, I mean, is is a child and their family going to be protected so that they can have free conversations with, uh, YSB people without worrying that all that that stuff is going to flow back into the school?
Yes, it's it's more it's more designed for the folks that sit on a juvenile review board, a diversionary program rather than court, to have access to information confidentially from the school district about maybe an educational thing that's been identified, special education, executive function, ADHD, something along those lines. They use this thing called Ohio scales and other stuff that I understand. But the program is compartmentalized. So for example, the liaison to the YSB, say, for example, it's the safety coordinator in the school. She would be able to see information on the the database from DCF that we use that might help or decide or explain a decision for a youth that was at a tier two. So one that was in trouble or exhibiting issues. Not not just the the programming, not the tier one stuff where we just do programming that's out there, where we're teaching kids how to swim, where we have a diversion, it's like that. This is children that it's a it's a greater tool to diagnose what's happening there. It's compartmentalized. You only get permissions to see it if you have the permissions.
Okay.
In place. So it it and the child is connected with the parents. And what we're supposed to do is confidential. Now, somebody breaches that confidentiality because they've got, you know, anybody can do that, then they're they're trumped.
Right. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
And the information is not shared with DCF. It's not. It stays internally with us. They don't see.
That's the whole point.
Yes.
Right? To keep them out of, uh, because those DCF records could be available to, uh, to other agencies or
They're supposed to see those.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Uh, tax refunds.
Move to approve the tax refunds totaling $24,055.95.
Sounds like a jeopardy score. Is there a second?
Second.
So. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Uh, okay, we're gonna I'm going to ask that we postpone agenda item nine each till after executive session.
Remove.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Um, just a couple of things for for, um, selectmen's reports. First of all, um, there is going to be on, uh, Tuesday at 12:30 a discussion at the senior center about, uh, the ins and outs of early voting. Anybody is welcome to attend that. Um, on November 5th, um, we are going to be having well, actually, no, November 5th is a general election, but early voting starts on October 21st and runs October 21st to October 31st, and then again from November 1st, November 3rd. Um, those item, those hours generally are 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. There's a couple of variations in there. Um, tomorrow night, we're going to do a ribbon cutting for or not a ribbon cutting, uh, yeah, a ribbon cutting for the new lights at the Abbey Road Soccer Facility. The high school boys varsity game is at four and the U 13 girls team plays at seven, and we're going to have a brief ceremony in between those two things where we'll dedicate the lights, um, and hopefully, um, begin kind of a a new tradition of bringing the community together under the lights for soccer games. Um, the Community Services Department is also going to be doing a, uh, coat drive, um, on Election Day. So drop offs will be at the two polling places, which is here and at the town hall annex. Um, anybody who wants to donate a lightly used, um, piece of winter wear, um, there will be opportunities to do that at both locations. That's all I have. Marines?
Yeah, I don't have anything to input.
No.
Um, let's mention the wetlands, uh, because, uh, they, one, got back to work after a couple of months of not really much action going on over there. And two, the application that they did approve last night had some public interest. It's like the 10 lot subdivision that's going on the end of, um, uh, at the end of, uh, near reservoir and depot and in that area. Um, that was approved. The reason why it was at wetlands was there was three lots that were in the upland review area. They're not actually in the wetlands, but they they're within the 150 feet that requires, um, some, you know, an application. So um, it was pretty straightforward and it was approved. So, um, and then they accepted another application for other stuff going on next week, but I mean, next month, but that was it.
That's the Tyler piece you're talking about, right?
Uh, east and reservoir app extension.
Thank you.
Yeah, but that's Tom Tyler is the owner, I think.
I think it was Precision Development was the applicant.
Yeah.
Right? They didn't have a person.
Okay.
Is that the property at the end of, uh, Depot Street?
Yeah.
No, it's on straight. You know the Omen's House, the red house at the end of Reservoir Road?
R3.
Reservoir Road hits, uh, east road, east road.
Oh, yeah, it's that dirt road.
Well, not exactly across Reservoir Road, but sort of across the road is the town has a farm road. And the development is to the left of the town farm road. So it's not.
That's the proposed one that hasn't gone forward to anyone yet, right?
Well, no, it got approved as Alan Alan just said by, uh, in the wetlands for their, um, in the wetlands application.
Now it moves to.
PNC, they haven't done that yet. That's what I was saying. I didn't see it on there. There, okay, so.
Is that a special use in an R3? I bet it's not.
No.
Okay. Uh, Sarah?
On September 23rd, I attended the building commission meeting, which we've already discussed what was conducted there. On September 25th, I attended the Board of Education meeting. The board recognized and awarded certificates to three teachers who completed the team teacher program. Congratulations to Zoe Stinson, Brendan Elliott, and Miranda Burke. The board obtained three bids for the Broadbrook Elementary School chimney repair, and after discussing their options, decided to award the bid to JHS Restoration, who was the lowest bidder at $69,690. There is money in CNR for this project. Um, a curriculum update was given focusing on analyzing student achievement. East Windsor students are trending up and showing improvement on their performance trends. Um, these are some numbers that the school district and the parents in the community should be really proud of. Based on SBA testing grades three through eight in English, students achieving a three or four, which is the the goal, increased from 39% to 45%. And the percentage of students who did not meet the goal decreased from 40% to 30%. In math, the students achieving the goal of a three or four increased from 26% to 43%. And the percentage of students who did not meet the goal decreased from 51% to 32%, which I think these are really good numbers and shows that the district is trending up. Um, science trends for grades five, eight, and 11 showed the percentage of students achieving the goal of three or four from 37% to 47%. Um, and the percentage of students who didn't meet the goal increased a bit from 20% to 28. So there is a little more work to do there. Denise Menard, who chairs the Board of Ed Facilities Subcommittee, worked with Kyle McDonald, who's the Director of Facilities for the school district, to create a CIP inventory list for 2024 through 2030 for the district. The spreadsheet was well received by the board. There was also a column added for showing projects that are either in progress or have been completed. The school district is prioritizing three projects for the CIP committee to consider this year. Um, the East Windsor High School and Broadbrook Elementary School roof repairs, um, asbestos removal, replacement ceiling tiles for six classrooms at the elementary school. And then, um, the continuing phase of the elementary school boiler system. Um, and on Saturday, I attended the Warehouse Point Fire District's annual pig roast, though they had an excellent turnout and it was great to see so many people in the community. That's all that I have.
Um, just that the Board of Finance, um, I think it was last night, approved those projects that we sent over to them for, um, to be funded by lots of money and by the CNR funds. And Jason, you were there, you presented the projects. And so now, um, it's going to go out to town meeting. Um, I don't know if we need to, if we've if we set the date for the town meeting already?
I typically just schedule it when
Just schedule?
Yeah, we have to post a notice and all that. It'll be, I do them either on, I I typically I do them on selectmen's nights. Um, so it'll either be the 17th or the or the following one, 7th, I think.
So anyway, those projects that that the board selectmen sent over have now gone to Board of Finance going off to town meeting. That's it.
All right, uh, public participation. This is the second opportunity for members of the public to address the selectmen. If you'd like to um, address the board, please state your name and your address, um, and then state your business. There is nobody online, so we'll just do it for folks who are here in the room. Young lady.
To be the cog in real, but you have the select person that is posting a lot of stuff on Facebook that I have here. We almost just got I'm not sure, but I think it's running close to unethical.
Thank you, ma'am. Other public comment? Yes, sir. Name and address.
I attended the ice cream social Saturday. I didn't hear anybody say anything about that, but it was awesome. And the amount of history they have for the town, it's incredible. I suggest everybody check it out. I I have never been through the whole thing, even the whole complex, so Saturday, I was really impressed. And I think a lot of people in town, especially people that have been in for many generations, can add a lot to that. I found a lot of things that I can add to the, uh, full complex also. It's very good.
I'll tell you, my, uh, I brought I did bring my son to that. My whole family went to the the pig roast, but, um, my son got his ice cream sandwich, which was two chocolate chip cookies and a chunk of ice cream. And because the poor kid does not like chocolate chips, he made me take the thing apart so he could eat just the ice cream, and he then threw the cookies away. I don't know where I failed as a as a parent, but that's an example of one A right there. I also, despite my very best efforts, could not get Deputy Chief Murphy to have an ice cream.
Full disclosure, I did not attend either of those ones on Saturday. Um, but I have done historical flyer, number of occasions, and have toured places with my girl scout groups over the years numerous times. Um, so I won't apologize for not attending either one of those, um, but I had company from Brazil, so they took precedence. They came in Thursday and left on Sunday, so they have precedence.
But I I really think a lot of people in town, the older, older generations have a lot taken off for different items. That's it.
Any other public comments? All right, we will have a very brief executive session. Um, it'll include just the five of us. There will be one vote to follow.
That we go into executive session.
Is there a second? We are all in favor. For an executive session at 8:46. All right, it's 9:01. We're out of executive session. Um, turn now to the call of the agenda and take up agenda item nine H, discuss and approve the engagement letter between town and Bartlet and Rippey. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Marie, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. We'll go for their business to come before the board. Uh, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn at 9:02 p.m.
Second.
All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? We are adjourned at 9:02 p.m.